If we could get everybody to settle down a little bit. This promises to be a very festive evening and festivity often translates into noise and chaos, so let's see if we can't get rolling. For all of you who have never been to a council meeting before, especially young people who presumably need to be here, to get your credit, you've picked an interesting night to come, and you'll see why a little bit later. But I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. I also would like to acknowledge the entertainment that hopefully you heard before we started. We had -- it's going to be tough -- Anjali Sivanandan? Am I close? No? Okay. And Sorin Crissell?
Crissell.
Crissell. I was closer on that one. Okay. Anyway, thank you very much, and we appreciate that. As we always do, let's start the meeting with an invocation this evening. The invocation will be provided by Father Andrew Lesko of St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church. Father, if you would come forward, and then we'll have the flag salute immediately afterwards, led by Councilmember Mike Nigar tonight.
Before I give the invocation, our honor.
I would like to make a confession.
Oh. That's backwards.
I think you -- yeah, I think you got that backwards.
Well, we'll see. It was in June of 2012 that I received a phone call from my bishop transferring me from San Juan Cabestranos to Temecula. I'll be honest, my first thought was, what did I do wrong?
Oh.
But after a little over two and a half years, I can honestly say it was the best move of my life, and I couldn't imagine being in a better place.
Thank you for that comment, Father. Appreciate it.
Let us pray. O Lord of hosts, you have made known your authority to us and delivered your orders for us to follow in your commandments. You have given us officials to exercise authority over us and have directed us to obey them and to pray for them. We ask that you fill the hearts of our mayor and council members with the zeal for the tasks delegated to them and with the understanding and concern for those whom serving under them must carry out those tasks. May they serve you with pure and exemplary lives and give those whom they lead an ideal to follow. Give them your wisdom, strength, and understanding to judge rightly on all matters set before them tonight during this meeting. Grant them your grace and love so that their actions will allow us to live our lives in peace and tranquility. For every perfect gift is from above and from you, the Father of life, and we send up glory, thanksgiving, and praise now and ever to ages of ages. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father.
If you'd face the flag with me, recognize all the principles and liberty for which it stands, and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Please be seated. Before we get into the actual agenda, I'd just like to give you an inkling of how this is going to go this evening, so you'll know what to expect. This is a very different kind of a meeting than we generally have. We have the distinct honor and privilege tonight to recognize a gentleman who has spent a good part of his lifetime and a good part of our lifetime as a city, in fact, just about all of it, in service to this city. And it's going to be a lot of fun and maybe a teary eye or two, but -- so please bear with us. We're going to have the -- we're going to move up public comment. I should ask, do we have any public comment? We don't have any public comment tonight, so thank you for that. That makes the job easier. We're going to go ahead and open with roll call, as we always do, and then we'll go ahead with two proclamations, first being relatively short, and then the second in honor of our distinguished honoree tonight. Will take more than likely some time because there's a lot of people who came a long way to be here to honor Mr. Roberts, and we all appreciate that. Once we're finished with all of those presentations, we'll recess the council meeting to the Conference Center, just as I'm looking at it to my right, and we'll have a reception in Mr. Roberts' honor. Everyone is invited to attend. We will reconvene the council meeting after 15 minutes of recess to complete the business that we have to do tonight. However, the reception will go on until, I think, 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning, right? For as long as anybody wants to stay there. Maybe not quite, but you get the idea. So for those of you who feel compelled to come back for the business portion of the meeting, certainly you're welcome to do that if you have business to conduct with us or if you just can't live without seeing a city council meeting, and God help you if that's the case. Anyway, with that, can we have the roll call?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
I'm here, and Councilmember Washington is here, too.
You. Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
I'm happy my big brother's looking out for me.
That's right.
Mayor Comachero?
I'm here as well. Thank you. So we are all here this evening. Then we will dispense with the reading of the rules for public comments, since we don't have any, and we will begin the meeting with the presentation of a proclamation for National Wear Red Day to the American Heart Association. So would you please come forward, those who are participating, and I'll join you. If I may, I'd like to read the proclamations. The City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas heart disease is the number-one killer of women, causing one in three women's deaths each year, yet 80% of cardiac events can be prevented; and whereas an estimated 44 million women in the U.S. are affected by cardiovascular diseases; and whereas 90% of women have one or more risk factors for developing heart disease; and whereas since 1984, more women than men have died each year from heart disease; and whereas women comprise only 24% of participants in all heart-related studies; and whereas women involved with the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement live healthier lives, nearly 90% have made at least one healthy behavioral change; and whereas Go Red for Women is asking all Americans to go red by wearing red on National Wear Day, February 6, 2015. Now therefore I, Jeff Comachero, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, in recognition of the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, hereby proclaim February 6, 2015, to be National Wear Red Day, and we urge all our citizens to show their support for women and the fight against heart disease, commemorating this day by wearing the color red. We can save thousands of lives each year by increasing awareness, speaking up about heart disease, and empowering women to reduce their risk for cardiovascular disease. So we appreciate very much what you do. We're happy to participate with this proclamation. And with that, if you want to say a few words, please feel free.
Very good. Very good. Well, I don't want to take up too much time. Sounds like you guys have a lot of fun to have this evening, but I do want to thank Mayor Comachero and the City Council for such a public and proactive stand against this killer and weak gear of families and communities. Thank you for the City of Temecula for being proactive and public in their stand and helping American Heart Association in its mission to fight this, to keep our communities strong, our families strong, keep our mothers, our daughters, our sisters, our cousins, our grandmas here happy and healthy, because they're the cornerstone of our communities, and Temecula is a great example of that. So again, thank you for your support, and I look forward to seeing you all wear red on February 6. Thank you.
You got it. Okay, and with that, we'll get to the meat of the evening. Mr. Roberts, your throne awaits.
I should have brought you a tiara.
We're playing this a little bit by ear because we've never had the opportunity before to honor someone whose service has been so long and so significant to this city. So bear with us a little bit. There'll be a lot of speakers, a lot of presentations. Normally, we'd ask to hold your applause and to exercise some decorum, but tonight I don't care. So feel free to whip it up if you want. Maybe we'll keep a little bit of decorum. How's that? And with that, we'll get right into it. The first presenter tonight, we're honored to have with us Chairman Mark McCarroll from the Pachanga Band of Lusenyo Indians. Chairman McCarroll.
Is this supposed to be?
Right there is fine.
All right. You know, it feels like a hearing. I'm trying to dispense with that sensation. Me yu yem. Palovu chamke. Good evening. Hello, everybody. 20 years ago, I was just thinking about this right now, 20 years ago, in the year 1995, our -- well, I'll just say the Pachanga Entertainment Center opened for the first time. And to put it lightly and generously with some poetic license, it opened to mixed reviews. Some people didn't know what to make of it. Some people didn't even know it opened. Of course, some of those within the city at the time weren't too keen on it. And as business evolved over the next year or so, we quickly grew to a place of misunderstanding with the Pachanga Entertainment Center. I don't even remember the date or the year, but things got a bit strident, and I think somehow, Ron, you were probably part of reaching out, and this was the Mayor Birdsall Council that I remember at that point in time. We agreed to meet, council to council, and two key fundamental things that affected, I think, everybody's lives here in the valley came out of that meeting and affect them in a way today and into the future very fundamentally. One is that the two councils, on behalf of their respective constituents, agreed that it was absolutely necessary to communicate rather than non-communicate. And, you know, from my side of the fence, so to speak, I can look around Indian country throughout the United States, and I see examples of where tribes and local governments are at odds. They're loggerheads, they're battling each other, and it's very unproductive, sometimes it's very expensive, and lots of people get drawn into these pitched, long battles of attrition. And I think we kind of resolved even then that that was not the best course of action. We agreed that there were many mutual bases for moving together in a way that we thought, at least conceptually, was possible, you know? Fundamentally, equality of life. We quickly resolved that, look, we live in the same valley, we all plan to be here for a long time, and we should make the best of it. So we had to agree to communicate, however. And so to put those words into action, the city committed to have a tribal liaison. And Ron Roberts, I'm not sure if you stepped forward and volunteered or if you drew the short straw.
I actually wanted it.
He wanted it, and I had heard that, so, in fact, you've told us that. So thanks for confirming that again. And that was probably one of the best things that had ever happened, I think, in the relationship between the City of Temecula and the Pachanga Band of Lusenyo Indians. So, and I'll say why in just a sec. So tonight, in reflecting on the retirement of Ron Roberts from active political life, I'm reflecting on behalf of my tribe, the Pachanga Band, that tonight is acknowledging a tremendous loss, and it's also acknowledging a tremendous gain. It's a loss because we lose a great advocate. Ron Roberts was able to advocate the city's interests with the Pachanga Tribal Council at a return, and he was also able to understand the tribal position in most cases all along the way. Didn't always agree with them, but he was able to sit in our shoes or sit in our chair and say, hey, you know, I see where you're coming from. And that always made a big difference. It seemed like, you know, he really understood the commitment of being able to communicate with each other at a fundamental level and at a personal level. So it's also a loss with his retirement that, you know, we lose a great deal of institutional knowledge, you know? How do you replicate this? How do you replicate what he did as a tribal liaison? And we also lose a tremendous breadth of knowledge, a number of arenas. He's got a unique skill set, knowledge set of things that are rather disparate, you know, far and wide, and was able to bring them to bear here in the valley and certainly on behalf of the City of Temecula in a very unique way and in a way that worked for Pachanga as well. So, you know, we lose all those things. I think, though, that we gain. We gain a legacy. We gain all the things that made him a good city councilman, a good mayor, and a good tribal liaison are also the things, I believe, that will make -- that will be part of the gain of the legacy. Now, for the next person that is going to be the tribal liaison, I think, you know, that gain, the legacy, means there are big shoes to fill. He certainly sets the standard because he was the first, so that mold is set and that expectation is there. And so, you know, it's a good thing, though. It's a high bar, and it necessarily is, and it should be. And then fundamentally, I think, you know, his temperament and his willingness to always have an open mind, to listen, and again, fundamentally, to try to understand where the other party was coming from, where Pachanga was coming from. He would step out and was proactive in trying to do these things. All of these things taken together are absolutely appreciated, and, you know, I hope they can continue in whoever fills those shoes. So we look forward to working with the next liaison. Ron, you know, we know you're still going to be here, so we look forward to seeing you from time to time as well. But I just, on behalf of the Pachanga people, want to thank you for the commitment that you made and how you demonstrated that into action. It was tremendous, and it has made a difference over the last 20 years, and I think it will continue to make a difference as we move forward. Because, you know, as elected officials, sometimes we see things work. It's like, well, how do we get this to keep working? And one of those things is you want to repeat those things that work, and I think that Ron Roberts has established a tribal liaison as a fundamentally important thing. So in closing, I'll just say that one of the key things that really made that work, and I want to underscore that, is that there was an understanding that the values we share in this community, in the valley, in the land, the air, all of that, we share across the tribal-city border. It has to work for the city, it has to work for the tribe. These things all have to work together. If they work for one of us, they should work for all of us. And certainly Ron Roberts understood that, and he made sure we understood that, and we carry that forward. So thank you very much, Ron. No shun of blovuk, chom shun of blovuk. We thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to underscore your point, Ron's shoes are so big to fill that it's going to take two of us to do it, and Councilmember Nigar and I will fill that role together, and we look forward to doing that. Our next presenter is Brenda Dunstadt on behalf of Congressman Ken Calvert, and I understand, Ms. Dunstadt, you have something exceptionally special tonight.
We want to hear. Come on, I've got to convey a couple of things, you know? Yes, I am here tonight. It is certainly my honor. Obviously, the congressman is in D.C., and he's stuck in a nice little heat wave they're having back there, right? So I'm sure he's enjoying that immensely, but he wanted to wish his friend congratulations on your retirement, and he regrets that he couldn't himself be here, so. But on his behalf, it is my honor to present him with a congressional record this evening. For those people in the audience who may not understand what this is, this is actually business that was conducted on January the 22 of this year by the 114th Congress on the floor by the congressman himself. So I'd like to take just a moment to read just a couple of lines off of this and to honor his dear friend. "Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor and pay tribute to an individual whose dedication and contributions to California and the City of Temecula are exceptional. Temecula has been fortunate to have dynamic and dedicated community leaders who are willing and unselfishly give their time and talent to make their communities a better place to live and work. Mayor Ronald H. Roberts is one of these individuals. At a celebration on January 27, 2015, Mayor Roberts will be honored as he retires after many years of city council service to the Temecula community. As the longest-standing city council member for the City of Temecula and as a man who has devoted over two decades to this great city, it is only fitting that he be honored as he retires from public service. Mayor Roberts' tireless passion for public service has contributed immensely to the betterment of our region and the state, and I am proud to call him a fellow community member, American, and friend. I know that many community members are grateful for his service and salute him as he retires and moves into the next phase of his life." That was done by the congressman on the congressional floor.
Needless to say, you have to be somebody really special to have that done in your honor, so. Brenda, please thank the congressman on our behalf.
Absolutely.
Next, we have a gentleman who wanted more than anything to be here tonight but couldn't. He's introducing legislation today up in Sacramento on the Senate floor, and that's our newest California State Senator, Jeff Stone. But he did find the time to record a video to honor his very, very dear friend, Ron Roberts. So if we can cue up the video?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers and fellow constituents. I'm sorry I can't be there tonight to pay tribute to my good friend and Ron Roberts for his tremendous service to the City of Temecula as I'm in Sacramento doing the citizens' business, but I would be remiss if I wasn't able to say congratulations to Ron Roberts and pay tribute to him tonight. I had the honor of serving with Ron Roberts for 12 years, and we were both elected back in 1992 when our city was just a infant city. And because of the vision of Ron Roberts, we live in a beautiful city today that is one of the safest in the state of California and has one of the highest qualities of lives. And this all didn't happen by coincidence. It's because of people like Ron Roberts that have put in many, many hours, not only as a city council member but on many sub-governmental bodies such as the Riverside County Transportation Commission, Southern California Association of Governments, Riverside Transportation Agency, the Western Riverside Council of Governments, and so on. Not only did Ron Roberts participate in all these sub-governmental agencies, but he served often as the chairman of those committees, providing the great leadership that he does, helping make Temecula the great city that it is today. We should be very proud of what's happened in Old Town because of Ron's vision with the Old Town specific plan. We have a thriving Old Town today where our wonderful new city hall is. Ron has been a strong advocate of infrastructure, such as the Overland Bridge, the Overland Extension, improvements of Margarita Road, and economic development. Ron was instrumental in helping get Forest City to build their regional mall here, which created over 2,000 jobs and perpetual sales tax income in the millions of dollars for our residents to enjoy through better services. We see parks from one side of the city to the other, wonderful recreation centers such as our Community Recreation Center, our Senior Citizen Center, our downtown beautiful theater. And of course, one of the landmark achievements of Ron Roberts was the beautiful duck pond, the entry statement when you come into the City of Temecula on the way into the wine country. This wonderful duck pond amenity is now going to be in ownership of the citizens in perpetuity. And then when our wine country was struggling, it was the city council with Ron Roberts' leadership that came up with money to find a cure for the glassy-winged sharpshooter that saved our wine country. And then later, Ron Roberts, joining my staff as a board of supervisor in 2005, helped champion the wine country expansion plan that protects now 25,000 acres in perpetuity, and through his help on my staff, helped further public safety in the county of Riverside. So Ron, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for 25 years of a wonderful friendship, 25 years of a wonderful relationship in working with you. There is no one that has worked harder and has been more successful in championing the high quality of life that our citizens have in the City of Temecula. God bless you, Ron, and your retirement, wishing you many years of health, happiness, and prosperity, and thank you for all that you've done for us and the City of Temecula.
That guy's pretty good. He ought to run for office one day. Representing Senator Stone is our very own councilmember, Mary Ann Edwards, who has a presentation for Mr. Roberts.
I'm going to come over to you.
Okay. Who are you? Who is this? Well, I'd like to stand. Is that my call?
Yeah, it needs -- there you go. So I have a bit more personal. First of all, we will get you a transcript of those words, and right now I'm representing Senator Stone as his district director for the West Office of the 28th Senatorial District, and this one's a little bit more personal. So this is a certificate of recognition presented to the honorable Ron Roberts. From his early days of service on the Temecula Traffic Committee in 1990 to his unprecedented five terms as Temecula's mayor, Ron Roberts has dedicated his life to ensuring that residents of his hometown enjoy the highest quality of life possible. As a result of his leadership, Temecula has become a shining light for public safety, for business attraction, a haven for families, a recreation destination, and award-winning wine country, recognized for its transportation safety record and a model for Old Town revitalization. Ron Roberts' vision and passion have been a driving force behind Temecula's success for the past 25 years. His loving hand can be seen throughout Temecula's parks, trails, buildings, streets, and beautiful landscapes. Like fine wine, he leaves a palpable vision that will continue to improve with age as Temecula matures into the city of his dreams. For all he has done for the residents of our beautiful City of Temecula, we owe our sincerest thanks to Ron Roberts, resident, volunteer, commissioner, councilmember, mayor, and friend.
Thank you, Mary Ann. The next up is representing the 3rd District of the Board of Supervisors, Vern Laurensen. Vern is chief of staff for the 3rd District. Vern, good to see you here tonight.
Oh, you've got a talk, don't you? Well, isn't that just like those state guys? They're just never here when you need them, right?
I'm glad you said that.
I'm very honored, Ron, to be here and represent former supervisor Jeff Stone and certainly the Riverside County 3rd District. It gives me great honor and pleasure to be here and offer some brief comments of recognition for you. We do have a proclamation. I want to be respectful of the time. I know it's going to go late, so there are several things here, lots of whereas's, as you can imagine. I do want to share just a couple, if I may. As you know, Ron Roberts joined the supervisor's staff when he was first elected in 2005 and since then has been an instrumental part of his staff who has accomplished many good things and been in charge of and responsible for significant things, and a couple here. Ron Roberts worked closely with Riverside County Fire, Flood Control, Parks District, Water Districts, the Native American Tribal Councils, and he became affectionately known to the 3rd District's staff as Earth, Wind, and Fire. I think that's because of all the earthquakes that he caused, the hot air wind that he exhaled, and all the fires he started. Ron Roberts possesses a great public spirit, and his generosity and his dedication are an inspiration to us all. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Riverside County
Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Riverside County that they hereby do honor Ron Roberts on his retirement and thanks him for his outstanding service and dedication to the residents of Riverside County. Thank you, Ron Roberts, as signed by all of the county supervisors, except Supervisor Stone.
Some of you may know that Mr. Roberts did have a life before his involvement in Temecula, and a big part of that life was that, I think it's 29 years, that he spent as a California Highway Patrolman. And so tonight, representing the California Highway Patrol, we have Captain Brian Lee. No, I'm sorry, Brian Lee is out of state and cannot be here. However, presenting will be Lieutenant Rodney Straight and Public Information Officer Mike Lassick.
Honorable Mayor and council members, city manager, and the directors of the community. Lieutenant Rod Straight, I'm here on behalf of the California Highway Patrol Temecula area. And like was just said, that Ron served 29 years and a few months on the Highway Patrol. He came on our department in 1965. In 1965, I was probably putting toys in my mouth and trying to learn how to crawl. So most of us are trying to achieve singular retirement, trying to achieve a retirement, but Ron has done twofold. He's retired from our department as well, now with the city of Temecula and the community. Ron was in there fighting crime, taking drunk drivers to jail, making the community safe, taking accident reports. He retired as a sergeant. He was supervising these guys out here in the field, making sure they did the right thing, all here in Temecula Valley. Then he retired and came to community service here in Temecula Valley, brought all that knowledge and important information, and used that to help better the community. This community is going to be, and I'm a part of this community, deeply saddened to see you retire, but one thing I want to do is say is thank you for your lovely wife and family here in the front and allowing them to allow you to serve the community. On behalf of the California Highway Patrol, we have a small certificate of appreciation. I'm not going to read it. There's a lot of words there, but this is a small token of what we appreciate you here in the Highway Patrol and in the Temecula Valley. Congratulations, Ron.
I really appreciate... This is something special to me. Boy, the stories I could tell that I'm not going to. I've had the fortune of probably doing everything I've ever wanted to do, and it just kind of, everything fell into place. And I never thought things like this would happen. This is my last day, and then I'm really retired, but you can see how much fun I had and still am having. I mean, you just don't do that if you don't want to do it. You do it because you love your job. And I have to say, the best time of my life was on the California Highway Patrol, especially around the Temecula area, because you're on your own. You only got one or two buddies out there, and that's it. And you work together, you work hard, and then you come home. And that's the best time. It's the end of the shift, you've done another shift, and you're safe, and you come home to your wife and your family. I look at it tonight as I'm coming home to my wife and my family. And I thank you all for being here. Thank you, guys.
In addition to the service that Ron gave in his private life, he's obviously been very involved in service, not just to this community but to regional boards and commissions statewide and on the federal level as well. So we want to hear from a few of those folks tonight as well. Representing Riverside County Transportation Commission is John Sanderford, Deputy Director. Good evening, John. One of the many organizations that Ron served as chairman or president or whatever the title happened to be.
Thank you, America Machero, members of the council. Back in 1999, RCTC expanded its board. Legislation was passed to where every city in the county was given a seat on our board. And since that time until this month, Ron's the only person we've ever had represent the city of Temecula on that commission, so there's going to be a big change. As you mentioned, he did serve as Chair of our organization in 2003. Doesn't seem that long ago, but he was there. But it didn't matter if he was a chair or just a member. He was always a leader, and when he had something to say, we paid attention. He was always supportive of moving forward but never shy about telling us when we were going the wrong direction either. All I know is there's a lot of things that we can point to in Riverside County that he can take a lot of credit for advancing, things like MetroLink, improvements on the I-215. His leadership had a lot to do with it. And just from a personal point of view, when I heard that Ann couldn't be here tonight, I jumped at the opportunity. I've always held you in high regard, and I'm really going to miss you. It's great working with you.
Well, thank you, and I have to tell you that I almost got to stay long enough to see the Paris Valley Branch Line. Not quite, but it's there. If you go out there, you can see the tracks, you can see the signals. You can't see the trains yet, but that's the next thing that's coming. So don't give up hope. Those of you who live north or you have to drive a long way on the freeway, take that train when it opens up, because I can tell you, my trips to LA were shorter trips just because I was on a train, and I love trains, and I wasn't in a car. That was the best part. So I think RCTC appreciates their kind words, and that was a fun trip for me because it was trains and everything that I love to do. So thank you very much.
Just starting to get in the swing of things here, Ron. That's good. Next, we have from the Western Riverside Council of Governments, better known as WRCOG, Chair of the Executive Committee, Randon Lane, and I see him sitting next to Executive Director Rick Bishop as well. So welcome.
I'm glad to be here this evening. I serve as the Chairman of the Western Riverside Council of Governments. I also serve as the Mayor ProTem in the city of Murrieta, and so I'm glad to be here to represent WRCOG this evening. We have a presentation, and you know what's interesting? Is you think about the legacy that you're going to leave and how long you have served in 1994, when Mr. Roberts was first appointed to WRCOG as the year I was graduating from college. I never thought that one day I would be here recognizing you as the Chair of WRCOG. It wasn't on my mind. But when you look at... And I'll read one whereas. We have many wherashes as well, and I will read one. Whereas during the council member Roberts' time on the city council, council member Roberts served as Chairman of the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure and Services Committee, Chairman of the Board of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, Chairman of the Southern California Regional Rail Authority, MetroLink, Chairman of the Western Riverside Council of Governments, Chairman of the South Coast Air Quality Management Mobile Source, Air Pollution Reduction Review Committee, and Chairman of the Southern California Association of Governments, the largest transportation planning organization in the country. As a council member, when you get elected, you hope that you have the ability to have impact and change in your community, and you hope that you have the ability to have a regional impact for the things that are growing around your borders. Clearly, you have created a legacy for your name and the work that you have done, not only in the city of Temecula, and you have done great things here, but in Riverside County and an impact in the state of California, how it affects the residents here. And so as a council member, not having served as many years as you have, I hope that one day we'll have the ability to have the impact that you have had in making this region much better. And so for that, on behalf of WRCOG, I want to say thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your dedication, and thank you for the legacy that you leave, not just to the people of this area but to the leaders of this area as an example. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a gentleman from an agency that's very near and dear to my heart, and I had the pleasure of serving with Ron for a great many years on the Riverside Transit Agency, Larry Rubio, CEO of the agency. Good evening, Larry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm more accustomed to calling you Chairman. It's a great honor to be here tonight to recognize this very distinguished gentleman. He came on to the RTA Board in 2005, and having a lot of experience under his belt, as we've all heard and you're going to continue to hear, he was a guiding force at RTA with a gentle hand, helped steer the wheel of the RTA bus into where we are today. An advocate for MetroLink and bus transit, he ensured that all of the timed connections from the bus were synchronizing with the MetroLink. He advocated for safety, for security, and I knew when he wanted to talk to me before a board meeting or a committee meeting, I'd better pay attention because it was going to be words of wisdom that came out, and it helped shape RTA and what it is today. He also helped guide the U-PASS and the Go-PASS, where we have over a million students now who ride RTA at no cost to them. We also have the Harvest and Shuttle here in Temecula, which is one of our highest-producing routes. The only reason that shuttle can't carry more students is because there's just no more room left in the bus. And along with you, Chairman, and you want to say Commissioner, Director, Chairman, Mr. Roberts.
They all apply.
They all apply. That I can't do. You asked me to do that a long time ago, and out of respect for you and all the titles you've earned, it'll always be Mayor, Councilman, Chairman, Director. Thank you for everything you've done on behalf of all the men and women of Riverside Transit Agency, the 9.7 million riders that we transport every year. I have a clock for you because you used to always tell me that our clock in the boardroom was wrong, so you can set this one at your leisure. Thank you, sir, for everything you've done.
And they're big enough I can actually see what time it is. Half the time, I'm not sure I was right.
That's a very lovely clock. I'm not sure how much use there is for someone who's retired, but you don't have to be on time anymore, Ron, but we know you will be anyway. Thank you, Larry. Next up, gee, another organization that Ron served as Chairman of or President, whatever the title is, from Southern California Association of Governments, Hassan Ikada. And also is Arnold here? Arnold San Miguel also.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, city manager, staff. Good evening. I actually was in downtown Los Angeles four hours ago, and I told my staff I'm going to go, and they said, "Well, Arnold is there." I said, "No, you don't understand Mr. Roberts' contribution to this region and to me personally, so I wanted to be here." Not only he was the President of SCAG, he was the Chair of every committee SCAG ever created. He was actually the reason for a lot of things that's going good for the organization. I know he's retiring, and I hope he will not regret a decision he made five years ago that he hired me. And for that, I'll ever be grateful. The region is grateful, the region that represents 18.4 million people, 190 cities, six counties. And I can, with a straight face, say in behalf of all of them and the 150 staff members in the six counties, I want to say thank you, sir, for all your service. We're indebted for you forever. So with that, I would...
I'll make this short and sweet. There's a reason you were hired, because you're number one. Everybody knows that. You can't believe how many other entities, corporations, companies would love to have And I think we all treat him very well with respect, and we always kind of whisper in his ear, "Don't you ever leave our organization." And he bows back and says, "Yes, I'm happy where I am." This is the number-one person. This is. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have someone who is never, ever at a loss for words, Mr. Shawn Nelson.
Oh, my goodness.
He's looking like, what? Did you call my name? As Shawn comes up, longtime city manager, not too recently retired, got a year or two under his belt now, but we all did some great things together, and I know that you have a special place in your heart for Ron Shawn.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. You know, Ron, I was sitting here trying to think of all the conversations, emails, meetings that we had over 21 years, because you and I worked together for 21 years. And I think he called me Nelson more than Shawn. Nelson this, Nelson that. But the one thing that he'd always say is that, you know, John was talking about Ron was never shy in letting us know if we were doing something or going the wrong way. I'll second that. He was not shy in letting us know, but he used to always tell me that I reminded him of his son, Ron Jr. And Ron Jr., I want you to know that that is a huge compliment to me. I've seen you, the family that Ron has, his beautiful wife, Jeanie, and I always felt like that was a huge compliment, and so I really appreciated you saying that. You know, you talk about all the accomplishments that Ron made over the years. The one thing that I didn't hear tonight, which in my view is probably the biggest thing that Ron did, was the Temecula Valley Library. The library was his thing. And I don't know if you guys remember the big brouhaha that we had when Carl Lindemans was on the council, and we had about $8 million to divvy out, and Mr. Comicharo wanted the children's museum, and Carl Lindemans wanted a sports park, and we had all these different things. Ron wanted the library, and he said, "Nelson, make sure you get me that library." So we had a state bond act that was passed, and there was several millions of dollars that was available. I don't know, $7,500 million or whatever. And we went up to Sacramento three times. It took us three times to get that funding, and the third time, I don't know if you remember this, but I got sick. I caught the flu. I was in terrible shape. Ron said, "Nelson, take a plane and go home." And I said, "No way." So I sat in the back. I could barely keep my eyes open, but I was listening. But Ron made sure that we got that funding. And the Temecula Valley Library is here today. It's one of the most amazing libraries that I've ever been in, the most successful one in Riverside County, and that library would not be here today had it not been for the efforts of Ron Roberts. So Ron, congratulations to you in that regard. And then finally, because I know we have a lot of speakers tonight, and since I'm not city manager anymore, I can say this without getting in trouble, I'm going to expose Ron Roberts tonight.
Nelson, you're already in trouble.
And I want everyone to know, because inside that hard exterior, I'm here to proclaim tonight that Ron Roberts is a softie.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And I'm going to let the world know it tonight.
I beat you to that already, Mr. City Manager.
This man has an amazing, generous, soft heart, and I'm going to try to... I'm going to go ahead and tell this story, and I'm going to try to say it without getting too emotional, but I used to... Most people around City Hall know that I wasn't very technical or technically inclined or whatever. Always had the IT people helping me, so instead of somebody coming in and doing a screensaver... So instead of somebody coming in and doing a screensaver, somebody had sent me a picture of, it was one of those nights when the moon had come out and it was overlooking City Hall, and they sent it to a lot of us. It was a beautiful picture overlooking our brand-new City Hall, and there's a scripture in Psalms that talks about the promises that God has for us, and it talks about the moon in relation to those promises, that those promises will last forever like the faithful moon in the sky. And I put on the top of that, I said, "My sweet Jacob," and for, I knew, for those of you who don't know, our beautiful son passed away over eight years ago, and so what I would have to do is, as I was doing emails, I'd have to forward this, because, you know, all these emails were coming in, and I would forward it and try to use it as a screensaver. Now, how dumb is that? But that was how I would do it. Well, one time I was preparing an email that I was going to send out to you guys, and as you know, I sent you probably 10 a day, right? Because communication was important, and this man drilled that into me to make sure, Nelson, no surprises, and as you know, you guys were rarely surprised, because we put a premium, and Aaron's following suit, and I'm sure the team's doing the same thing. So by accident, instead of sending the email to the council, I sent this picture to all five of you, to all five of the council members, including Ron. And I was so embarrassed, and I quickly wrote another email, and I said, "Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize." Every one of you wrote me back, and I don't know if you remember this, but every single one of you said, "Sean, don't apologize." But this man said, he didn't call me Nelson, he said Sean, and he said, "I have tears in my eyes as I send this to you, and I want you to know that seeing this picture and seeing the caption that you wrote has touched me to my inner core, and it reminds me of the relationship that I have with my own son, and I want you to know, Sean Nelson, that I will always be there for you." And that's what I want you all to know about Mr. Roberts. Ron, I love you to death, and I wish you all the best in your retirement, and I will never forget what we did to build this amazing, wonderful place that I'm sorry is the envy of every other city in Southern California, and that's the city of Temecula, where the sun shines through the mist. And I always said that the reason that we're special is not because we're more talented, and it's not because we're more experienced, but because we care more, and if you care more, you try harder, and if you try harder, you end up doing a better job. And Ron, that's the example that you set, and I'm proud and honored to have worked with you, and I love you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. I would like to recognize, also, I see, another one of our former city managers, Ron Bradley. Hey, Ron, would you stand and wave? Thank you for being here. From South Coast Air Quality Management District, South Coast AQMD, do we have Mayor Protem Pettis here? Good evening, Mr. Pettis.
You know, over the years, I've had the opportunity to follow Ron in a number of positions, including Chairman, President of SCAG and RCTC, have traveled all over the United States with him, and I'll tell the press enterprise about some of those trips later, just so they have it. I really think Ron enjoyed traveling with me, because I don't drink, and he got to pick up all my wine that was given to us at some of these, and I learned more about wine than I ever, ever wanted to know, but it has been fascinating. But tonight, I get to be here to represent AQMD, and not the regulatory side, but the good side, the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee. And MSRC is funded through a few cents off everyone's vehicle registration program. And over the years, and Ron has been on that committee since 1999, has given out millions of dollars to make sure the air in our region is clean, and we can all breathe easier because Ron Roberts was there. Thank you very much.
Another one of the organizations that Ron has been very involved with for just about all the time we had the association with our sister cities, and that's the Temecula Sister City Association, Mr. John Lieberg. Hey, John.
Mayor Comachero, Councilman Ron. The Temecula Sister City Association was founded in 1992, when our city was a mere three years old. It's before Jeff Stone and Ron Roberts were on the council. I remember the first meeting, we were across the creek on Pejul Street, where we had the city council chambers. Sister City Association was founded to foster cultural exchanges and the attendant goodwill that is possible through personal action, personal interaction of peoples, of different religions, politics, nationalities, Native Americans. This was a, when Ron Roberts got on the council, this was ideals that he embraced, and he was quick to assist us in our mission, and willing to contribute the time and effort to foster the relationships that we have with our two sister cities, Dyson, Japan, and Lyssendam Vorberg in the Netherlands. So on behalf of the Sister City Association, your walls are going to be covered with plaques. We have another clock, but our clock shows the time zone in every country in the world, so you can decide whether it's too early or too late to call Japan, speak to Kozo, or call Holland. And since our, as a lawyer, words are at a premium, it says, "Peace through people," which is the motto of sister cities, and it's to Ron Roberts in recognition of your outstanding service to the Temecula Sister Cities Association. Thank you, Ron. And I would, it's my pleasure to bring up our sister city liaison. It's the third one we've had in the 23 years that we've been an organization, and that's Robin Gililand, and Robin is outstanding liaison. She's somewhere? She's got her hands on it.
Getting her things together here.
Thank you.
Well, as you can see, I have all kinds of goodies for you, Ron. So we're going to start with the most important one, which is mine. So I'd like to kind of share a quick story about the first time I met Ron. It was, the year was 2000. I was a recreation coordinator for the city, and I coordinated the parades. And I had the good fortune of collecting all the convertibles for our council members to write in, and that year, little Ron ended up in a Kia Rio. Yeah. Can you imagine how happy he was about that? And he complained the whole ride. Well, when he got to the end of the route, he discovered that the driver was my husband. So I quickly, the next day, this is when the parades are on Thursdays, ran into Sean's office on Friday and said, "Do I still have a job?" Because I thought for sure I was done. Was it shortly thereafter that my then-director told me that I would be the sister city liaison? First thing I had to figure out is what a sister city was, because I didn't know, to be honest, and secondly, he shared with me that the liaison was none other than Ron, and I thought, "Oh, boy, here we go." But I have to say that I believe I really know and understand you, Mr. Councilman Roberts. You've spent your entire life in the role of civic leadership. First, obviously, as the California Highway Patrolman, a longstanding council member in Temecula, working closely with now Senator Stone, but to me, you're just Ron, my friend and my mentor, and I'm not going to cry. While I realize that being an elected councilman is a function of politics, I never in the 20 years got the sense of politics with you, because I really have told this to many people, you truly love your city and the residents, and it's pure and genuine. I've been in Temecula my whole career, and you were the councilman here, and so there's quite a few things that you've achieved, and that kind of we did together as well, being the sister city liaison. I love your keen insight into the significance of forging relationships abroad and connecting Temecula in a global sense through your commitment to the sister cities program. Transportation, as we've heard, is on the forefront of your passion, and I can honestly say that with yourself and your lovely wife, we have been on trains, planes, buses, automobiles, boats in both countries. You know, we've had an amazing international art exchange, both with both the Netherlands because of your support. Check out the duck pond. We have a beautiful Japanese garden, and we have a gorgeous area that represents the Netherlands, and that is in part to Ron's leadership. You opened a town square in the Netherlands. Your name is all over Japan. We've celebrated 10, 15, and 20 years of productive and meaningful relationships, friendships with our Dutch and Japanese friends. You know, in summary, people may forget what you've said, but they will never forget how you make them feel. And I know through all these years, you're a wonderful father and amazing grandfather, and you're even more committed to them than anything else in your life. And to this, to me, this defines a real leader and a real man. I tried to think of how to make this point, so I borrowed a quote from Desmond Tutu that really captures how you feel about your loved ones. You do not choose your family. They are God's gift to you, as you are to them. Others will make an indelible mark. You know, they'll all mention what you did for our community, but the mark I'm talking about is the one you made on me. You're the most honest and trustworthy person I've ever worked with. You have been a mentor, a confidant, and a leader, and far more than just Councilman Roberts. You're a true friend, and in our lives, we can say that about so few people. As we age, our circle gets smaller and smaller. So you're irreplaceable, Ron Roberts. This is one of the saddest days in my tenure in the city, but now you get to do anything you want. Well, in reality, anything Jeanne wants. I created a little book just for you with our pictures of the three of us. We do. We both look a little younger. I didn't need glasses when we started. And now it is my honor to present to you, there is a gift literally in the air from the Netherlands. I received several messages. They were hoping it would get here. It's a gorgeous book, but this is a note from the mayor, and he said, "On behalf of myself and our aldermen and all the citizens from Lyssendam Vorberg, we wish you the greatest happiness and joy in your retirement. Over the 20 years of our twining, we have exchanged many wonderful ideas and philosophies that continue to make the world a better place. Although my position was appointed by our Queen several years ago, we think of you, Councilman Ron Roberts, as Temecula's royalty, and appreciate that all you have done to facilitate our relationship. With much love, Mayor Van der Slus." And of course, nothing would be said without the multitude of gifts from our Japanese friends. So here are several from the association, from the city, and then there's a beautiful painting of Mount Dyson that was sent. It's a beautiful place. And one last little thing, we have a video the mayor from Dyson has sent in English, so you know that's a challenge, so.
Thank you. Cue up the video. There we go.
Honorable Mayor Comachero, council members, and everyone, to this very special occasion and a bittersweet occasion, it to us. I am Masnori Morita, Mayor of the Town of Dyson, Japan. It's very sad to be saying goodbye to Mr. Ron Roberts, who had been city council member of 22 years and may have five times. As some of you may have known, the city of Temecula and the Town of Dyson has kept their relationship since 1994. We just celebrated the 20th anniversary of our friendship last year. Mr. Roberts had been Temecula Council's sister city liaison for the entire 20-year During over the past 20 years, hundreds of student families and students in both Temecula and Dyson has had the opportunity to experience each other's culture, which have helped to give us many ideas and enrich both our community. We have valued his time and his passion about the cultural exchanges between our two cities, which become a model following the concept of the sister city. Nothing happened without him. We all will be missing you, Mr. Roberts. I sincerely hope that retirement will give you the time to relax yourself and provide the time to do more things with your family. I'd like you to know that we will continue to follow the value of our sister city of Also have a hometown in Dyson, Japan, and always welcome. Happy retirement. This Japanese picture, present for you. This Japanese picture, present for you. Thank you so much.
We know that was a little slow and sometimes difficult to understand, but it should be noted that Mayor Morita does not speak any English. And so he really struggled to learn to deliver that speech in English. So that's how much he thinks of you, Ron.
Yeah.
Okay, there's more, folks.
Can I make just one little statement on, before we leave, Nakayama and our Sister City relationship? Over the past year, I've had some health issues that has not allowed me to travel there. But I kind of changed my, some of my eating habits, and quite frankly, I'm getting myself healthy because I miss that trip. And I want to go as a private citizen. I'm sure that there'll be some others who'd like to go also, and I'm sure that our Sister City would like to have us go. I'd like to make at least one more trip. I know my wife would also. Just to let them know that we're still here and nothing's changed. And I hope in the years to come, somebody or a couple of you can kind of pick this up, because I know it's the scariest thing in the world to go to a foreign country on the other side of the world where people don't speak English. They only speak Japanese or another foreign language. They are the most beautiful people I've ever met, and I want to go back and I want to see them. And I hope that when the opportunity comes, we can get somebody on the city council who will find some time. It'll take about 12 to 14 days, the trip, to do the visit, and it's well worth it. I mean, it's an experience that you can't buy for any amount of money. You have to go to the right people, the people that really want you there. And these are our Sister City people. So just kind of plant the seed while we've talked about it and you've seen some of it. And I hope that if I can talk my wife into going back one more time as a citizen, maybe we can talk somebody else on the city council to go along also.
I offered to go if they'd let me fly the plane.
I'll have my attorney call your attorney. Okay.
Those comments require no further comments, so.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Ron. Another one of the organizations that Ron has been intimately involved in is Safe Alternance for Everyone. Melissa and Group, come on up.
Carol.
Carol Niles, founder, and Melissa Donaldson, executive director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm just sneaking in here for a minute to say thank you to my dear friend that I met 19 years ago in a meeting, trying to bring awareness and services for domestic violence to our community. And I have to agree with a few people here that, you know, at first, he seems kind of gruff, and you don't know really what he's thinking, but deep inside, he is a softie. He has a heart of gold, and without him, I really don't believe SAFE would have been here to provide services for our community. So thank you for supporting my efforts and other council members' efforts and the staff for all you did for us and for the community.
Well, I have two things for Ron from us. One, we have a beautiful glass plaque. I don't know where you're going to put all this good stuff, to just really talk about how he really is part of what started SAFE. And I met Ron in 2001, and I'd worked in San Diego for a long time, and I went to a meeting at the city. Mr. Nelson was there, I'm sure a few other people were there, but Ron was sitting at the very end of the table. You know this is important, because I remember this, like, laser focus. And I was given a presentation on why we needed programs for domestic violence victims and their children. And Ron didn't look at me one time. He had his head down, and I started getting, like, really stuck on looking at him. And afterwards, I said to Carol, "I don't think he liked me. I don't think he liked what was happening." And she goes, "Oh, no. He was listening very intently to everything you had to say." Subsequently, I've received a couple fabulous emails that will tell you what Shaun said. He's got a heart. He supports things he believes in, and he believes in children living in violence-free homes. So our other gift to you is our little pal pony that says, "I love SAFE," because I want you to think of all the thousands of kids and women that have been helped, and a lot of it is because of your vision and your leadership within the city. So thank you.
I'm hoping the next presenter will bring a wheelbarrow. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Melissa. And yet another organization that Ron has left his mark on, Habitat for Humanity. Tammy Marine and anyone who's coming up with you. Gary Thornhill. Gary played a bit of a role in this city himself.
Well, I'm wearing two hats tonight. First is, of course, my affiliation with Habitat. I'm the vice president on the board this year. Tammy Marine is our executive director, and as many of you, I suspect most people in this room don't know, Ron's long and storied history with our organization. And tonight, we just want to express our profound thanks to Ron's contributions to our organization. And I'm going to let Tammy do a little presentation, and then I do have a few personal words I'd like to say following that.
Gee, I can't imagine, Gary.
You may or may not know that Ron has been a part of Habitat for Humanity for over 20 years, and I mirror what the others say in that Ron has a heart of gold. There's not a time that I haven't made an ask for something that our agency needed or the clients that we serve, that Ron wasn't the first to come forward with a personal donation or support of some type and asking never anything for return, always wanting to keep it on the low key because he didn't want that level of recognition. And Ron, I respect you so much for that. So on behalf of our board of directors and our staff, it is my honor to present you with a Recognition of Service Award on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. And the plaque reads, "With sincere appreciation for your commitment, generosity, and exemplary dedication, your service has improved the lives of many deserving families in Temecula Valley, Habitat for Humanity." And thank you, Ron. It's just an honor to work with you, and we love you. We hope you're with us for a long, long time, too. We're not letting you off the hook. You're retired at the city, but not Habitat for Humanity.
I'm going to try to keep this brief. I know.
Win one.
Yeah, where is he? Back there. I'm not going to top that, for sure.
I know. We'll get the hook out.
Okay, okay. Get the hook out. I'm going to take you back, Ron, just a little bit. My first meeting with Ron, I think, or one of the first meetings, was back in 1992. It's a little thing we were doing called the General Plan Update. Actually, it was the first general plan for the city. And there were two people running for council from Meadowview who were really upset with one particular road that was being shown on the circulation. And one of them was, is now senator, state senator, and the other is standing right here before you. And I wasn't sure that I was going to survive the year that they got elected, because I got pretty worked over. But I have to, you don't remember that little road issue through Meadowview? Oh, yeah. North General Attorney? Anyway, it was resolved to their satisfaction, and I have to say that, other than that one incident, which happened to be the first one, this man supported me completely on just about any wacky, crazy, weird, wild idea that I ever brought before the city. And for that, I'm eternally grateful. The other thing I need to say is that nobody said it tonight, but his role in bringing the mall to Temecula can't be understated, along with Jeff Stone. Jeff and Ron and I, I don't know how many trips we made, how many clandestine meetings that we had trying to wrestle that project away from other cities in the area. We won't talk about that.
No.
And the other thing is, and I think you saw it in the mayor from Japan, from Dyson. I went over this last trip. Ron was supposed to be with us, and we were very disappointed when he couldn't make it. But I will say this: Ron over there is a rock star. Aaron, am I wrong? Ron is a rock star in Dyson. They love him. They were profoundly affected by his not being able to make the trip. We did have the little cut-out pictures, you know, with Jeannie and Ron on them, so every photo we took, we had them. So.
Those were the Ron masks that you had in your face.
So I just want to say, and of course, your support for our organization, but I don't think this community would be the same today if you had not supported me throughout the years, 1992 to 2006, the end of 2006, my retirement. We did great things together, and I'll forever be indebted to you for what you've done for this community. Thank you.
Gary, you'll appreciate this. You talk about putting that road through Menifee, Meadowview, rather. Just the other day, I had my car in for service, went to pick it up, and there was a gentleman picking up his car, and he looked at me and he said, "Thank you for your service to Temecula, and I want to thank you especially for never putting that road through Meadowview." So some issues have a long life, and we never did. Next up from the Temecula Valley Genealogical Society, Barbara Perez.
Well, I'm not Barbara Perez. My name is Larice Johnson, and I'm a longtime member of Temecula Valley Genealogical Society and a former board member. And I was the librarian for the genealogy society when we got the new library. But long before the library actually opened, Ron and Jeannie are members of the society, and they were at a meeting, and he was talking about the library, and I think there was some discussion about, "Well, gee, if you could have anything you wanted at the library, you know, your dream for the genealogy society at the library, what would you like?" And there was a lot of discussion, and we said, "Well, we'd like maybe a dedicated space in the library for genealogy researchers, and maybe we would like some computers in that space. Gosh, you know, maybe a microfilm scanner printer would be good, and we'd like some dedicated shelf space so that we could have a collection of books." And Ron sat there and he listened, and he really went to bat for us and made sure that we got all that at the library. So we do have a dedicated space to do research. We do have upwards of 1,000 books on the shelves there. We have researchers not only from Temecula but from Corona to San Diego, from other states on interlibrary loan borrow books from our library on an interlibrary loan. Our collection is, we have one set of books called the Silver Books that we had a national speaker come in and say, "This is the only library outside of Boston, Massachusetts, at the Mayflower Society that has the complete set of the Silver Books for the Mayflower Society." I didn't know. I thought everybody had them. And so we just want to say thank you, Ron, for being our advocate and for really helping us to be really established as a leader in the genealogical community. And in Temecula, our membership is about 150 members, and it's a growing society, and thank you. And this is Barbara. And we do have, we do have also a plaque, so.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I think, as I recall, setting up this meeting, we had a contingency plan for a second table to house some of all these, so I think we need to put that plan into effect. And Betsy shaking her head.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, let's do that. You know, as the evening goes on, and I see an awful lot of familiar faces, and I would like to recognize a few people who I see out there. We have from our planning commission, John Telesio, and Ron Garrio, our longtime assistant on the council, Sue Steffen, who has done a tremendous job keeping Ron in shape for all these years, as well as the rest of us. Butch Murphy, Pichanga, Jacob Mejia, also from Pichanga. Alice Sullivan from the chamber. I'm going to miss people, and I'm sorry. Lenai from our commission as well, from our community services commission, John Honeman, now on Jeff Stone's staff. I see Jim O'Grady, who served as assistant city manager for many years and on Sister City Committee. Jeannie, my love, Jeannie Ward. Boy, she never would want to miss a council meeting with her wonderful husband. Mr. and Mrs. Ward were here just about every meeting now. Well into her 90s, she's still here. So Jeannie, we love you. And if I miss some others, I'm sorry. I'll get back to you. But you know, one thing that I think would be appropriate, Ronnie, maybe you would do the honors for us. Introduce your family, would you? Mr. Ron Roberts, Jr.
Microphone. Microphone.
Yeah, come and put it in. It's all right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Ronnie.
At first, I'd like to introduce my beautiful mother, Jean. And I think it goes without saying where all the power and control is in the family. It's right there. This is my wife, Cara. And then two of my three kids. This is my son, Tori. He's a fourth-year student, business major at Cal State San Marcos.
When did that happen?
And my daughter, Taryn, who just recently graduated from Northern Arizona University, and she's now teaching in the Temecula School District.
Oh, nice.
We also have the pleasure of my mother-in-law and father-in-law tonight joining us as well. They're good friends. We spend many holidays together. And this is Bill and Nancy Fromling. And we have one other son, one other grandson, who is not with us tonight. He's a first-year college student in LA and is playing baseball, and this is the opening week of their season, so they are doing things and getting ready for their season. So he's with us in spirit.
Thanks, Ronnie. Sorry to put you on the spot. Ha, never ends Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival. Who's here? Is Melody here? Melody Brenstein.
Mayor Comacher and council members and Ron, it is a pleasure to be here, to thank you, Ron, for what you've done for the Balloon and Wine Festival. A lot of people don't know, but I do remember you got involved with us in 1989 when we had our first Lake Skinner event. had our first Lake Skinner event, and I think you came into the Chamber of Commerce office and made a comment about, "Just because you have a lot of traffic doesn't mean they won't come back next year. You'll get them twice as big." So, we're looking forward to a big 2015. One of the things that you don't know, Ron, also did, many of you here, is, and I cannot put it on that little board for the picture, but I have a picture. In 1994, Ron stood on the Balloon and Wine Festival stage.
Yeah, hold it up this way, Mel. There, he's going to try and get it.
There you go. There we go.
There you go.
There, okay. He stood on the Balloon and Wine Festival stage and gave the keys of the city to a DJ team known as Mark and Brian from KLOS.
Is that Jeff Stone in there? It sure is.
Yes, look at that hair. Not only that, the DJs looked over at Ron and they said, "Does the mayor have his own hair?" And they went and pulled on his hair and said, "He has his own hair, it's not a tube." So those are the things we remember about Ron, and that he has been an integral part of the Balloon and Wine Festival. So what we want to do, Ron, is say thank you and give you a token to remind you that you always have the keys to the festival and the keys to our heart. I know, I get to wear two hats today.
This is an older hat. Back a number of years ago, there was an organization that formed in Temecula for the sole purpose of raising funds to be able to build a community recreation center in the city, and became known as the CRC Foundation. I understand that that organization actually disbanded after it was successful and did its job, and the CRC was built, disbanded in 1998, I think it was. But you've reassembled for tonight, for one night only, to pay tribute to Ron Roberts. So, Melody, all yours.
Yes, we did come back. In 1998, we did disband, and that was after raising funds for the CRC, as well as a lot of other activities. Ron was always at our events, as was his wife and his family. They were often at our events and supporting us, but he also came to our farewell party. If the CRC Foundation members that came to say thank you are still in the audience, I'd like them to stand. We were known as the Gang of Twenty. We've gotten a little smaller. But everybody, I texted them, and I talked to them, and I said, "We really have to do something." So what we did was, we got a plaque together that has the Gang of Twenty at our farewell dinner party, as well as a picture of the CRC. And on it says, "Ron Roberts. This one was for the kids. CRC Foundation, thank you for 25 years of greatness."
Is Mr. Church still here? David, where are you? There you are. David Church has been our lobbyist in Washington for more years than David either you or I care to say, and he came all the way from Washington to tonight to pay tribute to his good friend.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, first of all, it's difficult to get rid of me, so you can trust I'd be around for a long time.
I've noticed.
There is a certain dichotomy, I think, in humor, in that as unaccustomed as am I to public speaking, and with the growing stack of hardware over here, all I have to offer are words. So, Ron, first of all, thank you for being my friend, and thank you for guiding me through so many political shoals of the organizations that we've jointly served. MetroLink comes to mind, Riverside County, RCTC, RTA, of course, Temecula, and the list goes on. It's obvious that because you were here, tens of thousands of citizens of this community are better off, and because you were here, there are millions of Southern Californians that are better off. But what we haven't really mentioned tonight, and I do so very briefly, is that so many other Americans are better off because you were here. And a single example comes to mind of the amount of time and advice that you gave to North Star, Minnesota, so they could establish a commuter rail line, and I'm pleased to say that is up, running, and successful. And that may not have happened without your being here. Your ideas have been incorporated into federal transportation legislation, so in addition to the millions of Californians being better off, there are tens of millions of Americans who are better off because you were here. I want to thank you again for your friendship, and I will just tell you that you are as fine a friend as a man could hope to have.
Aw, David.
Thank you, David. I've known David Church for many years, and David, I have never, ever seen you that serious. Well done, my friend. Okay, from our own Public Traffic Safety Commission, we have Chairperson David Coram and Skip Carter here, too, or whoever wants to come on up, come on up. Another one of those pretty cool ones.
All right, we've heard a lot tonight about Ron Roberts and where he came through city council and his past before, before he was on the CHP, but now we're going to listen a little bit about when he got here to city, started the city side of his business. And we have a certificate of appreciation from the city and the Public Safety Traffic Commission that states, I'm going to kind of break it up in a couple spots, because I want to thank him personally, because I've been a resident here since before the inception of the city in 1989. And if you think the traffic is bad now, and you were back here then, you would think the traffic is actually much better now than it was there, when we only had 10,000 people living in the city at that time. So we'd like to take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for your experience, professionals, and commitment while serving the city of Temecula for the past 25 years. Your tenure with the city of Temecula began as a member of the city's traffic committee, to which you were appointed in January 1990. In October of that same year, you were sworn in as a member of the original Traffic and Transportation Commission, where you served until your election to the city council in 1992. You were instrumental in drafting and implementing the Traffic Congestion Relief Plan, whereby civilian traffic control officers were used at major intersections to provide traffic relief prior to the installation of traffic signals in Temecula. If you can remember, for those of you that were here, we had one traffic light in town, and on all the freeway exits, there were stop signs. That was it. Want to talk about rush hour, 10,000 people getting home and at the same time off the freeway? We were backed up quite a ways. Your dedication in tackling the traffic issues is commendable, and your efforts in maintaining the extraordinary quality of life are recognized to both Public Traffic Safety Commission and the residents of the city of Temecula. And we have two things for you, this lovely plaque, and I want to shake your hand as a resident of that time, thinking about to this part today. I've always wanted to thank the guy that put those guys out on the sides of the freeway that were waving and getting us the traffic off the street. So I want to thank you very much. I hadn't had that chance, I didn't even know who did that. And I want to thank you very much for that, going back 20 years or so ago now. Thank you very much. You're it.
I don't even know how I got it. It was just like, we got a problem here, a real problem.
And the other thing we want to give you is this nice street sign, and when your neighbors wake up tomorrow, they'll find out that their street has been renamed your name.
I'd just like to say how appropriate that is, that it's Ron Roberts' way, because Ron Roberts always got his way. That's pretty cool, isn't it?
It's a business to get into.
All right, there you go.
Yeah.
You're retired.
Yeah, really. Okay, from the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, RCA, Scott Miller from the city of Santa Sinto. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. This is one of those events you don't miss out on. It's like missing somebody's wedding. It's a once-in-a-lifetime, it's supposed to be a once-in-a-lifetime event, and you don't miss out on those events. And what an honor to be here. You know, getting elected back in 2010, the timing was right, because I had the last four years to observe this man, and you don't get many opportunities like that. One of the first things I learned about Ron, and from a distance, too, is when a local official or somebody who really wants to make a difference in a community lets their roots go down deep, and they stand there against all the storms that come your way, you can accomplish amazing things. And he's probably one of the best examples I will ever have of that. The second thing is, is, you know, a lot of us politicians, we go to a lot of events, fundraisers, get-togethers, and we're all in the same room, and we're talking, and you can feel the energy, right? Everybody's talking about the wonderful plans they have, and there's only a few people in that room that really know what they're talking about. And Ron is one of those guys. Every time I would go to an event, I would seek him out, and no matter what I posed to him, he always had an answer. He's already been through it. He has seen it, he's fought those battles, and I'm very appreciative of that. So, I am here to represent the Western Riverside Regional Conservation Authority, which is the largest conservation authority in the United States. And Ron has been a part of that, really like so many other projects here in the county, he's been there from the beginning. And so it is with the RCA. Ron has been a part of that from the beginning. And with the 16 cities that are part of the RCA, when Ron would walk in the room, you knew he was respected by all the cities, all the districts within the Board of Supervisors, well-respected, because he knew what was going on, and he knew how to cut through all the stories and get to what really needed to be said. So, on behalf of our chairman this year, John Tavelloni, and our vice chair, Eugene Montanez, and the rest of the RCA staff, I want to thank you, Ron, for your commitment, for your stability that you brought to the RCA, and to the rest of us as a great example. God bless you and your retirement, and thank you for all that you've done.
We're getting close. The next presentation is by a gentleman who couldn't be here tonight. He's based in Washington DC as the Executive Director of the National League of Cities. And I had the privilege of serving with Ron for many years together, side by side, at the National League of Cities. He brought me into that organization and taught me a tremendous amount, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. But we do have a video from the Executive Director, Clarence Anthony, of the National League of Cities.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry I can't be there with you tonight in person, but I'm honored to have the opportunity to recognize Councilman Ron Roberts for his years of dedicated service to Temecula and to cities nationwide through his work with the National League of Cities. Ron has provided invaluable leadership to our organization since 1995, when he joined our Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. As you all know, there are few issues as important to America's cities as transportation. Ron understood that importance and brought his considerable set of talents and leadership to our organization and to his work. Ron was named Chair of the committee and oversaw the work of over 150 elected officials to develop our advocacy with Congress around the safety and security of public transit and developing America's infrastructure. Ron, I want to personally thank the city of Temecula for supporting your efforts within the National League of Cities, and congratulate you again. You will be missed. We thank you for your service and dedication to America's cities.
By the way, it's interesting to note that Clarence Anthony, at one time, was an elected official from City in the South, and he became the president of the National League of Cities, and years later came back as the executive director. He's really a good man. Then we also have a organization in the state of California, the League of California Cities. They couldn't be here tonight, but they did send a statement, and in fact, a proclamation. I'm not going to read the entirety of it, but just the beginning and end. It says, "Whereas the League of California Cities has been fortunate to have a longstanding and dedicated council member and mayor committed to serving and representing Temecula and the region." And then it goes on, "Now therefore be it resolved that the League of California Cities recognizes and appreciates the outstanding leadership of Ron Roberts, and thanks him for his continued dedication to local government and the League of California Cities, and further that this resolution of appreciation be duly recorded on this 27th day of the month of January in the year 2015." And then, we have one more. Couldn't be here, yet another organization who Ron Roberts happened to chair, and that's MetroLink. And I know at times that was a challenge for you, and it had its ups and downs, but also serves a tremendous amount of people all over Southern California. And they also sent, this is a certificate of commendation to Ron Roberts, "On behalf of the entire MetroLink Board Directors and Staff Team, we wish to thank Ron Roberts for his years of service and leadership to MetroLink." And it goes on to talk about some of those accomplishments, and ends with, "The entire MetroLink team wants to thank Ron Roberts for his many contributions regarding the development and growth of MetroLink, as well as for being a strong advocate for Southern California's public transportation needs. We wish him all the best in his future endeavors." And it's signed by the leaders of MetroLink. And now, what is, for me, the best part of the evening? Mr. Roberts. I thought about roasting you, but I thought, no, it's time to be a little bit more serious than that. One thing, I've got a million Ron Roberts stories, and I won't bore you with all of them, or too many of them, but when I was listening to...
Getting ready.
Hell, we have a very special relationship. When I was listening to the Sister City group and some of the stories that they had to tell, it reminded me of one night that I will never forget, and we have a picture to prove it. But you and I and Jeff Stone in a restaurant at the end of a bridge in Skavening, Holland. Remember that night?
Oh, I thought, good. I thought you were going to say in Japan, and I remember the three of us simply.
No, no, I'm not going to go into that.
It was just a steam room, that's all.
Oh, don't go there.
As I said, I'm not going to go into that.
Nothing bad.
No, move on.
Go ahead.
For the record, I've never been to Japan, but this particular night was a grouping of a few different people from around the world, and our sister city in Holland also had two other sister cities. I'm not sure exactly where they were, they were kind of secretive, but the gentlemen from those countries wore black suits, white shirts, black ties, and spoke with a decided Russian accent. And I still can't pronounce their names or the names of their city. But this was, we were having dinner, and we were all celebrating together. They didn't speak any English, and obviously, we didn't speak any Russian, but they spoke vodka. And they just kept pouring vodka, slamming it back, and then slamming the shot glasses on the table, yelling, "Nostrovya!" Remember that? And we all got into it. I think we all became Russian that night. That was strange. But, Ron, in all seriousness, when I was first elected to the city council in 1997, you'd been here for four years at that time, and I was pretty green. Didn't know very many people, didn't know much of anything about running a city, and how I got elected, I'll never know, but... how I got elected, I'll never know, but I did. And Ron, you very graciously took me under your wing, and you taught me a tremendous amount. Things in general, logistic things, how to do whatever I needed to learn how to do. But unquestionably, what you taught me was, in order to serve the city of Temecula, you have to love the city of Temecula. And I really thank you for teaching me that, and I know that that's something that has applied to you from day one, from the day the city was incorporated, and all the things that you've done. I've known this man for a very long time, since the first time I met him. You probably don't even know this story, but the first time I ever saw you, my wife and I were going out to dinner at a little restaurant that we used to love, and I think you and Jean loved it as well, a place called Ferrari's Bistro, long since gone.
I remember that.
For those of you who've been around and remember, and Giuseppe Ferrari was just a great chef, and he put together a great little place. And I remember walking in there with my wife, Pat, and seeing Ron and Jean sitting at a table, and I'd never met him, and I said to my wife, "That's the mayor!" And I couldn't believe that I was in the same room as the mayor, and I have the same reverence for you that I had then. I may not have always told you that. But we've all sat here tonight and listened to an incredible story of an incredible man. And for all the years that I've known you, I learned a lot tonight I never knew about you, the things that you've done, and I know a lot of things that I won't repeat, that nobody ever repeats, that this man has done, to help others, to show your heart. You have been a true great citizen of the city of Temecula. And for me personally, what you've done to help me and show me how to be that kind of citizen, I'll never forget you for that, and I appreciate that, my friend. We have something special for you from the city. You could have guessed that. Oh my gosh. I hope we didn't pay by the pound. You know you're always welcome here, and sometimes we keep the doors locked. So in order to get in, you need a key. There's your key. I think you're going to need to help with this one, too. There's a proclamation that goes along with it, but we have it here as well, and I'd like to read it. "City of Temecula proclamation, Ron Roberts Day. Whereas Ronald H. Roberts has served the city of Temecula for 25 years, and whereas Mr. Roberts was first appointed to the Temecula Traffic Committee on January 23, 1990, and served until he was appointed to the Temecula Traffic Commission on October 2, 1990, where he served again until he was elected to the Temecula City Council on November 3, 1992, and then re-elected four times thereafter, serving a total of five terms continuously through December of 2014. And whereas Mr. Roberts is the only council member in the history of the city to serve as mayor five times..." I don't think I'm going to catch you, but I know you're very proud of that, and you should be. "Whereas Mr. Roberts has many accomplishments to be proud of, including preserving the Temecula Duck Pond," we didn't get to talk about that too much tonight, "as a beautiful city gateway, advancing economic growth, including development of a regional mall and the revitalization of Old Town, providing parks for families and youth, promoting senior programs and facilities, as well as the state-of-the-art public library, supporting nonprofit organizations that provide services to enhance the well-being of Temecula citizens, prioritizing public safety and anti-gang law enforcement, and helping to secure federal, state, and regional funding to improve the city's transportation infrastructure, including Temecula roadways, freeway interchanges, trafficlight synchronization, and public transit opportunities. And whereas Mr. Roberts has served as Chairman of the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure and Services Committee, Chairman of the Western Riverside Council of Governments, Chairman of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, Chairman of the Southern California Regional Rail Authority, MetroLink, President of Southern California Association of Governments, Chairman of Southern California Association of Governments Transportation and Communications Committee, Chairman of South Coast Air Quality Management District Mobile Source Air Pollution and Reduction Committee, Chairman of the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival, and has chaired or served on numerous other boards, committees, and task forces. And whereas Mr. Roberts served as the city's liaison with the Pechanga Band of Luceno Indians, and as our sister-city liaison to Dyson Japan and Lychendam Borberg in the Netherlands, thereby fostering greater understanding, peace, friendship, commitment, mutual enrichment, cultural exchange, and education between our nations. And whereas Mr. Roberts' forward-thinking, tireless efforts, and love for the city have made Temecula a better place to live, work, and play. Whereas the city of Temecula commends Ronald H. Roberts on his many achievements, appreciates his accomplishments, and warmly wishes him a magnificent and rewarding retirement. Now therefore I, Mayor Jeff Camachero, on behalf of the City Council of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim January 27, 2015 to be Ron Roberts Day."
Thank you very much. My good friend just said, "We're going to miss you," and my reply was, "Where am I going to go? This is my home. I'm not going anywhere." I never thought it would get to this point. You know, I think at the start, I had short-term goals. Being in law enforcement, especially California Highway Patrol, puts you on a different level. You don't have time to relax, you don't have time to end one thing before five other things are happening. It keeps you busy, but it also keeps you in a place that you really want to be, and that's where I wanted to be. That's why, that was what I wanted to be from the time I grew up, was California Highway Patrol. I started with the top. I figured if I was going to go to the top, it would be the Highway Patrol. If I found out that they didn't want me, well, I'm going to have to look someplace else. This all kind of started because I was newly married, and I was working at a market, the late shift, and we got robbed. And there was two of them, and they took the money, they were running out the door, and I was between the door and one of the robbers. And I did probably the stupidest thing I've ever done, is I tackled him, because I played football. And that's all I could think to do, I tackled him. Well, luckily, the guy that really, I think, was the brains of the gang, he saw that I already had his partner down, and he took off and was going out the door. So I took the closest thing I had, which was a bottle of wine, and hit him over the head. And I was feeling pretty good. Then I turned around, started walking, or started running towards this other guy, and here he is, just going out, and he's got a gun, and he's turning around at me. And that's when I made the best split-the-shit decision I've ever made, and that was, "You've had enough tonight." But that, in a nutshell, that's how I got kind of where I am right now. I was in law enforcement, CHP, God, the stories I could tell you about that. I was lucky enough to end up working here. I worked several places, mostly, I got to work in the, when I promoted to Sergeant, I was the watch commander downtown in LA. And of course, that was a real experience, because I didn't know anything about anything and like that. I wanted to go out and arrest people, and not watch people who are dispatchers getting fights back and forth with each other when they're supposed to be dispatching cars. So I got out of there real quick. I did some time as a supervisor, Central Los Angeles. That was fun, because at that time, we had 151 CHP officers, lot of motors. I didn't have to worry about a backup. They were there. And then, my wife and I moved here to Temecula. This was a place I never wanted to leave, and I still feel that way. So what I've done in my career is something I wanted to do from the start. I didn't change my mind about it, it's what I wanted to do, and it's been a great career. And when I got into politics, I didn't get into politics because I wanted to be a politician. I got in because there wasn't anybody else around at the time who knew a lot about traffic direction, or knew how to plan traffic direction, or a lot of the things that I had already been trained as a Highway Patrol officer. So it just got better, and it just got better, and after 22 years on the city of Temecula as mayor five times, it's time, because there's a lot of other people out here who, all they need is somebody to tap on the shoulder and say, "I know something that maybe you'd really be interested in." And that's the way to get started. All it takes is just one sentence from somebody to another. That could be your career, but don't just turn around and walk away. Think about it. Think about it. That could be the rest of your life, and that's kind of the way it's been with me. I've had some times where I wish I was other places at the time, but nothing I could do about it, and I got out of it. I mean, that's just the way it is. Anyway, it's been a great life, and I'm not going to let it end right now. I'm looking for my next adventure, and I hope it's with my wife, getting to the trip to Japan that we couldn't make because I unfortunately got myself really sick, and it took a while to get well. But I'm feeling much better now, and I think I can make that trip and go back one more time and see my friends in Japan. And take a little bit more time off and relax, too. I think this is going to force me to do it, but that's what I'm going to do. And the last thing I want to say is, I can't believe there's so many people here tonight. It just blows me away, it really does. I didn't think anybody noticed.
Oh my gosh.
So with that, I'm not saying goodbye, it's just, I'll be around, and I'll see you.
I know it's a little bit anticlimactic after that, but I would be remiss if I didn't give my colleagues a chance to say what they really think about you. So as our last order of business before we recess, for those, my colleagues who want to say something, Chuck Washington, I see you in the queue. How about it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First things first, Sean, when you left, he needed someone to replace being his son. It became me. And so we would joke, "You see the family resemblance?" I first met Ron when I got elected to the City Council of Temecula Norte back in 1995. Ron was a wise old sage who'd been elected to this council three years earlier, I think, '92. And we began to represent our two cities at WR-COG, and Ron took me under his wing and kind of showed me the ropes. He knew I didn't know what I was doing. If I did, I wouldn't have run. It's sort of an on-the-job training kind of program for all of us, I think. You never realize what you're getting yourself into. But for the next four years, I sort of followed Ron along with all of the things that he was doing. He suggested that we needed to become a part of the EDC. He introduced me to a lot of the folks that he knew in the county and regional organizations, and I learned a lot in those four years. I was happy when the opportunity presented itself to join this council in '03, and for the last 11 years, I've called him colleague, for the last two, dad. He's been a friend, a mentor, a great colleague, and he's shown a lot of great leadership through many organizations, but none more important, I don't think, than right here in his hometown, Temecula. Thank you, Ron. Godspeed.
Thank you, Chuck. Mike?
You know, Ron, I think I have to take credit for part of your career, because for the past four years, I've been hearing that you ran for the extra term because it was me. Okay? Because you wanted to stick around and make sure you kept me in line. But, you know, I remember back in 2001, there was a time when Ron and I were not friends. And that was a bitter time. But I could talk about it today, because I remember, right around December, maybe 2001, right around there, remember, I got an email from Ron, and then a follow-up phone call. And the email is very blunt, like Ron is blunt, saying, "Listen, do you want to work together for the benefit of Temecula or not?" It was an honest question. It was very blunt. You remember that, Ron? And something Nelson said, and a theme that keeps weaving, I think, Mr. Camachero, you mentioned it, is something that we all have in common here, is we really love this place. I mean, really, really love this community. So when he said something like that, it resonated. There's a truth beneath the words, so to speak, a connection. And I wasn't sure that I trusted that, but inch by inch, meeting by meeting, we did learn to trust each other, didn't we, Ron? We did. And he became an advocate of mine on so many of the things that I wanted to venture, and vice versa, that all I could remember now, as I look back, in fact, in all honesty, I have to really stretch back to share these memories with you, because they don't really occupy a place in my brain. I haven't really thought about them in a long time. But as I look back now, what a run. What a run that we've had since the 2000s to 2013, 2014. Of course, Mr. Washington came aboard, and then Ms. Edwards, back then it was Jeff Stone. We did amazing things, and one thing that I could always count on was, once we all began to trust each other and really put all the politics aside, we became a well-oiled machine. And so much so that I knew what this man needed and thought, and he knew what was important to me, and then we knew that when we saw sticky problems coming before the council, we had every confidence that that night, we were going to serve the citizens and come up with a solution. We never really worried about it. And so I salute your service, I salute your honesty, I salute your trustworthiness. Your willingness to trust me brought out the best council member I could be. to trust me brought out the best council member I could be, and you helped me be that. And I really appreciate that very much. A couple of other things that have not come up tonight that have to come up tonight, is that when I think of Ron Roberts, there's two particular meetings that come to mind.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
And that was Ron inadvertently scheduled or agendized, with all good nature and good heart, whether or not we should ban elephants in the city of Temecula. Now, it was a worthy question, okay? There were some people who thought that there may have been elephant abuse, but that turned into, at then-time, the longest council meeting in Temecula history, okay, till about 2:00 in the morning, okay, where we listened to both sides of why we should ban elephants and why we should not. And if you ever want some, I call it some good civic entertainment, okay, civic entertainment. It became a very emotional issue, okay? And I remember that. Of course, we, I think Jeff Stone was mayor. We ended in true Jeff Stone style where we instructed staff to contact our federal senators to look into it, and the issue died there.
But that...
I have to apologize to you because, because Ron and I shared a friend who was pushing that issue.
Right.
She came to Marietta first.
Right.
And I said, "Run it by Temecula, see what they say."
There you go.
If they go for it, we'll go for it.
Right. Thank you.
The truth finally comes out.
All right. Now, if you're really going to go that far, she made the email rounds with all the council members, and everybody turned it down but Ron bit, okay?
Yeah.
Ron bit. And it turned out to then be the longest council meeting in Temecula history.
But that meeting generated the best question in the history of council meetings, and it came from Councilmember Nigar, and that question was, "Could you please tell me what is, could you tell me what a happy elephant looks like?"
I mean, ladies and gentlemen, we got into this, but again...
Best question ever asked in a council meeting.
I wish Jeff Stone was here because, again, he deserves to be state senator. In true Jeff Stone style, with all vigor and fortitude, we referred it to our federal senators, okay? Told staff to contact them and take it up as federal legislation. We never found out whatever happened with that, okay? But then, I guess it's only fitting that Ron presided on probably, that was the longest meeting, but then there was the one that took the cake after that till, I think, we went till about 3:00 in the morning.
3:00.
And that was, was it 3:00 in the morning?
3:20.
And that was one that made national news, where we were deciding whether or not we should allow a mosque to be built in Temecula. And of course, the council decided yes because we all came down that the Constitution prevails, notwithstanding about whatever we may think personally about religion. But the interesting thing about it, and I'll finish with this, Mr. Roberts, is part and parcel of the council you served on and you helped lead, in that even, I knew that night, it was going to be a long night. And I knew that night, it would be contentious and emotional, but I also knew, had absolute confidence in this council because we have did it so many times before, that we would listen to the people, we would give it a fair hearing, that we'd weigh the issue, and not just sit here and listen, not just pretend to listen, but really give everybody who came to that podium our full attention. And we did for almost six hours, one after the other, and of course, we made our decision. How do you encapsulate, what is it, 23 years that you've been on the council? Is that the amount?
Two.
22 years. We can't do it with plaques and certificates. That's our best shot. I wish I can tell you story after story after story, but I'll just say this, we've had a fantastic run, and you deserve every accolade that you're getting. And my gosh, if I can finish as strongly as you did, then I'll feel it an honor. Thank you. It was my pleasure to have served with you.
Thank you, Mike. Councilmember Ron.
Well, Mr. Roberts, this is an intimidating evening, to say the least. I don't even know where to begin. You know, we met a little over a year ago at Mimi's Cafe to discuss my interest in running for Temecula City Council. And we discussed it quite often, quite vigorously, and I knew that your support and your endorsement was not to be taken lightly. It was an absolute honor to have you support me in my campaign. It was also incredibly intimidating because I knew exactly what I was in for. I don't know how I'm going to come up with something better than an elephant ban for the city of Temecula.
Ah, it's going to happen.
But, Mr. Mayor, I will do my best this year to try, and I will definitely see if we can keep us here to at least midnight once this year. So I'll do my best.
Tonight may be that night.
I'm going to try. You know, I'm watching the clock tick, and I've got plenty of jokes. But, you know, it is an absolute honor to have known you. Your guidance, your support, and your wisdom has really helped me understand what it means to be a council member for the city of Temecula, and I can't thank you enough for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Before we hear from Mrs. Edwards, I have to say for the record that my best recollection of the elephant night was that we did come to a resolution.
Yeah.
And we made the motion and passed the motion that we would allow the elephants to come with the circus, and we would have inspectors on the site
Yes.
to make sure the elephants weren't mistreated. And I knew that we had made the right decision because absolutely everybody in the audience was mad at us. So that's how you can tell you made a good decision, when you have the same number over here as over here. But we did actually come up with a resolution, and you know what? I think it worked.
Yeah, that's correct.
Mrs. Edwards?
That's what happened, and everybody was mad. And I wasn't on the council at that time. I just came for the entertainment. I cannot remember having ever met you. You've always been there, like the sky and the clouds and the earth. You've always been there. Honestly, I cannot remember having met for the first time. Do you remember? I cannot remember having met you. You've just always been there. And that has been the way it has been for me all along. I remember after a particularly difficult council meeting for me, I don't know, I can't remember the situation, probably in, early in the beginning. I don't remember if I brought something up or made a silly mistake, which, you know, maybe a minor mistake or something, or said something, I don't remember. But I remember getting an email from you, always encouraging, always encouraging, "Hang in there," or, you know, "Next time, you can try this, do something differently," always, always encouraging. So you have been a terrific mentor from the beginning. I just can't remember when the beginning was. You've just always been there for me. And...
I don't think there was ever a beginning. It just happened.
Yeah, it was just, you've just always been there. And I think that people are probably stunned at the number of things that you have done. People have known that you've done a lot of things, but the level to which you have risen over those 25 years and the people that have been impacted by your leadership. Not in the audience, are you stunned? Yes, everybody to a person. And you know why? Because he's so modest. You would never know what he's done at the levels in Washington DC and who he knows at what levels, department heads and secretaries, cabinet members in Washington DC, and at the levels of the state. Temecula's name is all over the country because of Ron Roberts, but he doesn't talk about those things. He doesn't broadcast, and he hasn't changed since the beginning. Ever since I've known him, which seems like forever, he has not changed at all. He's still Ron Roberts. And he is that gruff exterior that can make staff members shudder and dive and leap over, you know, run down halls and leap over cubicles and quake in their boots. But he's also the same Ron Roberts that, you know, shows up and encourages at the same time. And he has a wicked sense of humor, and I don't drink at all, but he was darned well sure he was going to try and teach me about wine and what made fine wines and what didn't make fine wines. And to me, they all taste the same, so that was a total failure. I have here just an inkling of that wicked sense of humor. This is my certificate of appointment to the Traffic and Safety Commission from 1998. And he did this and signed it as mayor in 1998, and I took it and was so proud. This was my, I had been involved as a volunteer with the city for years before this, in fact, probably for 10 years before this, since we first moved here in 1988. But Ron signed this in 1998, and I probably had it on a shelf for two years before he said, "Did you ever look at that certificate of appointment?" And I said, "Well, yeah, I look at it all the time." He said, "Did you ever really look at that certificate of appointment?" He said, "Go home and look at it again." So I went home, and I looked at it, and I looked, and I looked, and I looked, and on the signature line above his name, where it says, "typed Ron Roberts, Mayor, 1998," he signed it, Roger Rabbit.
So you were never officially appointed.
Was I really?
That's right.
On the traffic commission all those years? Did we really pass those things? A 3-2 vote? Or was I the swing voter, was I not the swing vote?
I think everything after that is voided in your career.
Did we really not open that road in Meadowview, or did we? You'll never know. Wicked. But I love him dearly. And how many times did I talk you into running again? Too many times.
Too many times. But I'm glad she did. With that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you to everybody who came and expressed their love for this man. All of us who know him understand that and appreciate that. Know it's been a long evening, but we do have some refreshments out in the conference center. It's 9:25. For those of you who have business with us, we'll reconvene at 20 to 10. I don't think we have more than about 15 minutes worth of business to conduct after that. But for right now, stay with us, spend a little time, shake a few hands, and especially that man sitting right there. Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, crisis.
We'll be in recess.
And yeah.
There's a slide presentation going on in the conference room, too. You'll see some of it up here. It's kind of funny.
Sure. Go.
That is great.
Roger Rabbit.
Hey, bud.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for being here.[170.23]
If we can have all of our members and staff reconvene.
No, as long as, no, I won't say it, never mind. Close.
Mrs. Edwards, there's an empty seat up here next to me. Would you like to fill it?
We do have two speakers on consent.
Okay, on what items? She'll tell me.
Did he say go have a party? Didn't he say don't go have a party?
Thank you. Okay, we're going to reconvene the city council meeting. Been a very interesting night. And at this point, I'm going to ask very half-heartedly if we have any city council reports. Seeing none, we'll move on. That'll take us to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Actually, we do have some speakers on these items, so they will be pulled, but I'll go ahead and read the consent calendar. Item 1, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Item 2, approve the action minutes of January 13, 2015. Item 3, approve the list of demands. Item 4, approve the sponsorship agreement with Michelle's Place for the 2015 Reality Rally, a fundraiser event for Michelle's Place. Item 5, approve the sponsorship agreement with Temecula Valley Foundation for Excellence in Education for the 2015 Taste of Temecula Valley. Item 6, approve and co-sponsor project application for the Urban Streams Restoration Program grant. And item 7, receive temporary street closures for 2015 Spring Fest events. We do have two speakers, one on item 4 and one on item 6, so with the council's concurrence, why don't we entertain a motion to approve or not, to the balance, exclusive of items 4 and 6, and then we'll take those separately. We have a motion by Mrs. Edwards.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Ron. Please, let's cast a voice vote on this, make it easier. Yes, Mr. Washington.
I have a couple of abstentions. One of them has been pulled, so I'll need to leave the dais for that. Item number 4, I will be abstaining from item number 5. And Peter, on item number 7, within the street closures is one of the events that I'm abstaining from. Well, I need to abstain from that as well.
No, the temporary street closure under the new FPPC rules does not count as something that would create a conflict for you.
Okay.
Remember, they changed the real estate rule, so if you had something minor such as slurry sealing or sign striping on a street near where you have an economic interest in a real property, then you don't need to abstain from that.
Okay, should I disclose now why I'm on both of those other items, then? I will be leaving the dais when we get to item 4 and abstaining because California Tees, a business that I'm a part-owner in, has donated t-shirts to Reality Rally, and there will be promotional consideration given for that donation, with the exception of any city collateral. And then, same thing on number 5. California Tees has been asked to provide a bid quote for doing the shirts for that event as well.
And I might also point out on number 7, there's no council action. It's only received and filed. So it's really just notice and not approving anything with respect to that.
Okay.
Okay, so first of all, we need a second on that motion, which is consent calendar exclusive of items 4 and 6.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. We have a second. So it looks like you're ready for us, Madam City Clerk, so we can vote electronically.
Yes.
With the noted abstention.
And that motion does pass 5-0 with the noted abstention by Mr. Washington on item 5 at this point, and then we'll discuss 4 and 6 when we get to them. So may we have the speaker on item 4, please?
The speaker on item 4 is Gillian with Reality Rally.
Thank you. I don't think we need a staff report. Here, does anybody feel we need one? No? Okay. Ms. Larson and friends?
I don't need one.
There you go. You asked for it, you got it.
Well, I first thought I was going to come up here at a loss for words because of this most amazing evening that we were all part of, and I knew that you wouldn't believe that I would be at a loss for words. But I would like to congratulate you all on what Temecula is today. It is an amazing, amazing city and town, and we're proud to be part of it. We have a few of our representatives. Reality Rally has become a part of Temecula, and we do it because we love Temecula and we love what we do. I'm not going to give my usual "brrr" talk about the event. You know what we do. We love doing what we do. We love being part of Temecula. But I do want to take one minute to thank Jennifer and Joni, who are a big part of our production team. We now have 50 people producing it and about 400 volunteers making it happen. But I am going to take one more minute. On Survivor, I was known as the Elephant Woman of Gabon because I collected elephant dung. So on our second Reality Rally, I asked the city council if I could please ride an elephant into the event because I was known as the Elephant Woman. And I had the whole thing planned. I had the elephant. I had how I was going to ride in. It was going to be just glorious because all my clues were printed on poo poo paper from elephants. And I had the whole thing planned, and the city council said no. Now I know. It came from a 2 o'clock decision in the morning. So, sorry, I couldn't ride the elephant. So thank you for your support of Reality Rally, everybody. We really appreciate it, and I will never be able to thank all the wonderful people that work with Reality Rally making it happen. So thank you, Jennifer, Joni, and everybody else. And here are some of the books from 2014 and some of the stats from where we bring people from all over the country. And we'll be back April 10th and 11th. And the city council really is going to put in a management production team that's going to beat Lake Elsinore because they've won for the last three years. So thank you very much for all of your support, and we do love Temecula.
Thank you. I'm Gillian, and thank you for what you do for Michelle's Place as well.
That's just sad, people.
I know. Any, why don't we go ahead and take a motion on item 4?
Second.
A motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously 4-0 with Mr. Washington abstaining and leaving the dais. And the final item is item 6, approve and co-sponsor project application for the Urban Streams Restoration Program grant. And so may we have the speaker on that issue, please?
Mr. Mayor, the speaker is Teri Bianacardi.
Good evening.
Honorable mayor, councilor's staff. It is definitely intimidating being up here. I'm here tonight representing Meadowview, and we in Meadowview love Temecula as well. I'm also the author of the Urban Streams Restoration Grant. I began working on it in late November, and as an ordinary person like me, assembling a Department of Water Resources grant application by myself with all the science that's required was a pretty heavy lift.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I terribly apologize for interrupting, but Chuck lives in Meadowview, and he is a member of the Meadowview HOA, so he will be abstaining.
Chuck, just go home. Thank you, and apologize for the interruption.
So I apologize to you and the speaker.
No problem. But then the rainstorm of December 4th came, and it washed out part of Iannorte and caused massive bank failures, and that reinforced to me the urgency of dealing with this public hazard, but I needed some help. So I reached out to council member Chuck Washington and Mike Nigar, and you both immediately pledged your support. It was as though the cavalry had arrived. I began to believe that we could really do this, and so thank you for that. I also want to thank you, Jeff Colmanchero, for your wonderful letter of support. I also want to thank the city staff, Amar Attar, Stuart Fisk, and Scott Cooper, who, just two days before Christmas, gave up part of their day for a site tour and a brainstorming session with Meadowview and the agencies on how we could fix this problem. And I want to reserve a special thank you to Tom Garcia, who is my City Point Man, was a paragon of patience and professionalism in dealing with my frequent requests for help on something or other. So to me, this is a great example of local government at its best, working in partnership with constituents to solve local problems. No one from Meadowview, not me, the board, or any of the community members who participated in this project, will soon forget how the city stepped up. So whether we win the grant or not, and I really hope we do, we've got a process in place. We're making progress, and thank you for your cosponsorship.
Thank you for being here, Teri. Appreciate it.
Do we know what the timeline is on that grant?
March, public comments. May, they'll make a decision.
Okay.
Great. Well, we'll all keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Nigar, a second by Mrs. Edwards. Please cast your vote.
And that also carries unanimously 4-0 with Mr. Washington abstaining. Okay, that takes care of the consent calendar and takes us now to the Temecula Community Services District Meeting. And Chuck, you're here just in time. Go ahead.
Called to order the Temecula Community Services District Meeting. Madam City Clerk, please let the record reflect that all five directors are here. Do we have public comment?
No.
No? Okay. We'll move on then to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted with one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. The one item is to approve the action minutes of January 13, 2015.
Move the item.
I have a motion by Mr. Nigar and a second by the mayor.
Oh, come on. Just give me one.
Or anybody else can make the motion since Mr. Nigar is long-
No, I'm not going to withdraw my motion.
He's withdrawing his motion.
I made the motion.
And a second by Mrs. Edwards.
No.
Second by Mr. Ron.
Thank you.
Press your button.
Did you push your button, Mr. Ron?
I can't.
Why?
I don't know. This is what Ron did. I want to keep the tradition alive. I'm doing my best. I told you, they're tough, tough shoes to fill.
Give him a chance, and look, he can't push a button.
I didn't even have to vote. That's good. Who voted for me?
Nobody.
You're not in the queue.
You're not in the queue, see?
You're absent. It's for another-
Oh, that motion carries 4-0 without me here.
Okay.
Yeah, I told you to go home, and you listened.
Director's report, I'm sorry, general manager's report.
Mr. Hawkins' report. Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
His report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
I'm just one of the directors that are pertinent to the discussion. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we adjourn.
Sneeze in my general direction.
I'm sorry about that. At this point, we'll reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Item 9 on the agenda is conduct public meeting concerning the establishment of the Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District and levy of an assessment on lodging businesses within the district. Can we have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, due to my wife's employment with Visit Temecula, I'll need to recuse myself from the dais, and I have not been involved in the discussions for this project. We'll also need to probably extend the meeting beyond 10:00 p.m.
Not yet, we don't. But thanks for the thought.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll do the staff report. Mr. Mayor, I'll be quick, try to get in before 10:00. Mayor and council members, this evening's meeting is the second step in the legally prescribed process to form a business improvement district or bid pursuant to the Parking and Business Improvement District law of 1994. The process was initiated at the December 9th meeting, at the December 9th city council meeting, with the passage of the resolution of intention to form the district. Low background, in 2005, the city council, at the request of and with the unanimous consent of the lodging businesses within the city of Temecula, established the Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District, which implemented a 2% assessment on the room rents of the lodging businesses. In November of 2009, again with unanimous support, the assessment went from 2% to 4%. The revenue derived from this levy is required to be used for marketing promotions to increase tourism and the Temecula Valley as a tourist destination that especially benefits lodging districts located and operating within the city limits. The bid has been very successful and substantially increased hotel stays here in the city. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, now known as Visit Temecula Valley, along with all the lodging businesses within the city, have requested that the city convert the bid from a district formed under the 1989 law to a district formed under the 1994 law. In essence, the new district would function the same way as the current district, with the only significant difference being the initial assessment will have a duration of five years instead of being levied every year. This will allow the Convention and Visitors Bureau, as the manager of the district, to project revenues over a five-year period and to develop long-range projects for advertising and promotions for the benefit of lodging businesses within the city. This evening's meeting is for the council to hear public testimony regarding the formation of the proposed district. The formal public hearing to tally the votes of any protest votes and take action to form the district has been publicly noticed and will take place at the February 10th city council meeting. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Do we have any public speakers on the matter? Will entertain a motion to set the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Peter, did you have anything you want to say?
Well, the public hearing's already set, so you just make a motion to accept the fact that you had the meeting open and nobody chose to speak.
So moved.
Got it. We passed that.
Okay. We're going to have to move to the stand.
Cast your votes, if you haven't already. And that motion does carry unanimously 5-0. Item 10, in the last minute of the meeting, introduce the ordinance amending section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets. Tom, that you-
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The California Vehicle Code requires review of existing speed limits every seven years by method of an engineering and traffic study. This allows for continued legal enforcement of the posted speed limits. This item was heard by the Public Traffic Safety Committee on their meeting December 11, 2014, and approved on a 5-0 vote. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any speakers?
Move the city attorney. Introduce the ordinance.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula, amending section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets.
Thank you. With that, please cast your votes. We did have a second, by the way. I'm just not sure who it was.
Me.
Mrs. Edwards?
It was a silent second.
So it was a silent second. There's a real estate term, if I've heard. That motion does carry 5-0. Do we have a report from Mr. Adams?
Nothing tonight.
Now, you want to report on dinner, Peter?
I think tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Proven a German in honor of Mr. Roberts.
Very good.
Thank you. And also, if I may, in addition to honoring Mr. Roberts tonight, I think that's very appropriate, it's also the 70th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz at the end of World War II, where 1.2 million people lost their lives. And not much we can do about that, obviously, at this point, but I'd like to adjourn also in honor of all those who survived and continue on with their lives.
Clearly. A motion amended, clearly.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any objection?
No.
We stand adjourned.
Very nice.
Thanks.
Really nice night.